Good evening and welcome to the Board of Education meeting. If you please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May I have a motion to approve the agenda this evening? I have Robyn and I have Irene. Any edits? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Tenure appointments. We just had our tenure reception, which was wonderful, albeit it was over Zoom. But may I have a motion to approve our tenure appointments? Thank you Renee and Ted.
I'd just like to make a comment about our tenure appointees this evening. I'm sure that you never imagined that you would be, in a year, to be tenured, being the most historic year that we've ever had in education. You never imagined the world of hybrid and remote instruction, yet you not only delivered, you excelled. We're just honored our district retirees last week, and they worked in the district for over 530.6, right, Mr. Clark? Years collectively. So there's no pressure there, but we looked around the Zoom this evening, and we now see who is going to be the future of Pittsford Central School District, and we are so proud. Reading your tenure recommendations, the Board of Education has the utmost confidence in your ability to educate the students of this district exceptionally well and well into the future. Congratulations to all of you. We look forward to seeing each one of you in person very soon. With that, all in favor? Opposed? Motion is carried. We welcome Ms. Heather Clayton from Menon Center Elementary this evening to give us a report. Heather, thank you so much for our shortened version of a tour this year. We really appreciated it and all the beautiful artwork that is on the walls of Menon Center. It was greatly appreciated, so thank you for being here tonight.
Thank you, and thank you to the Board of Education, central office team members in the room, Rich Albano, our assistant principal, I'm sure he's watching at home, and the entire Menon Center family for getting us through what has been a very challenging, but at the same time uplifting, year. So in my report tonight, I intend to give you just a brief snapshot of some of the impacts of COVID, but the bulk of my report is going to be celebrating the children because their voices are the ones that haven't been heard as much in all of this, and there's a lot to celebrate, and I'm very proud to share this with you tonight. So I chose this kindergarten friend for this slide because her shirt says it all, "Shine Like Me", and they're smiling behind their mask each and every day. We've had quite a few changes to how we do business at school. Of course, we have our classroom pods. We had 40 pods this year. We revamped how we did arrival and dismissal, lunch and recess, and our special area classes. So just to show you quickly, I'm not going to fascinate you with the fact that we relocated 96 student desks and added 50 more and added 120 chairs, and we have 96 tables in the building and 42 in storage. But I shouldn't know that, but I do. So that's the year that we've had, and it was a lot of work over the summer, keeping of spreadsheets, measuring of tables, setting up rooms. But once that was done, we were ready to let the fun begin and get the kids in. We did use the Pick My Kid app this year for student pickup. We had over 200 families use that app for pickup, and we increased our walkers from about 12 to about 100 per day. So I don't see those as bad things. That's been great, actually. It's been nice to see the kids walking home, getting fresh air, and pickup has been much easier with this app that we are planning on continuing to use. So with the COVID changes underway, we were ready to get back to our work, and our vision at Menon Center is to unlock the potential of every child. We've continued our work with our professional learning communities and our culturally responsive education. And our culturally responsive work isn't about hanging different bulletin boards or having a guest speaker or having a couple books around. It is really about how we're building cognitive capacity in our kids from diverse backgrounds. So we're considering how they learn and the ways that they learn, and we're celebrating that. So for example, many of our children learn in communities with a lot of oral tradition and storytelling and visuals, so we incorporate those practices in our work. So the PLC work and the culturally responsive work are really one and the same for us. It's all about maintaining high expectations, assuming collective responsibility for our kids, working together and building those strong relationships. There's our little Einstein there. The children did still dress up for Halloween, so that was fun. So we're proud of the fact that we know all of our children and their stories. They're engaged in class meetings every day, whether virtually or in person. It's a big celebration of how we are all different, but we're more alike than you know. We model empathy and kindness, and we take care of each other, most importantly. So moving ahead throughout this year and moving into next year, at the foreground was SEL, while also focusing on boosting academic achievement. Through those trusting relationships, confidence, and self-regulation, the kids have the capacity to do that hard work. We had a book club at Menon Center, reading this Heinemann publication, "Reading to Make a Difference", and I love this quote by the author. "Children need to be able to see their race, culture, family dynamics, neighborhoods, and experiences, as well as their triumphs and tribulations represented in books." And that has been a big focus of our work at Menon Center, is bringing rich literature into classrooms so that we have thoughtful discussions, meaningful tasks, kids engaged, learning how to disagree, learning how to agree, sharing their best thinking, and it's been a lot of fun to see how all the children have grown through this work. We had a Menon High School student decorate what used to be our green cart for recycling. Now this is just where we keep a lot of our different books, representing lots of different cultural backgrounds. Sophia Albano, a student at Menon High School, coincidentally also Rich's daughter, painted this cart for us, and it's full of rich literature selections from our libraries. But we house it in the office where it gets a lot of traffic from the teachers. So there are copies for the children in the library, but there's also copies for teachers in the office. And they're grabbing and sharing, and then sharing with each other. Inside every book is a bookmark for the teacher to record, who used it, how they liked it, and also some tips for discussion in each text. Our second graders had a lot of fun this year with a March Madness tournament. They're doing a perspective-taking unit with literature, and they picked a number of their selections and made brackets for them. And just like with the basketball tournament, they did it with the books. They had a lot of fun. They even got their matching shirts. That's what you're seeing there. The winner was "All the Way to the Top: How One Girl's Fight for Americans with Disabilities Changed Everything", but it was so fun to be in the classrooms and see the kids engaged in discussion about which text they liked better, evidence from there, things they learned, connections they brought to it. It was really a lot of fun. The kids enjoyed it. So in addition to reading to make a difference, our children have been doing a lot of writing to make a difference. One fourth grade class has been studying environmental issues because it was of high interest to the children and relevant to them and to the curriculum. And I just want to share this poem. I know you can't see it, so I'm going to read it to you. But this is a fourth grader who wrote a three-stands-up poem using personification about the earth, and he pulled into this text everything he had learned through his study of environmental issues in the classroom. "I am earth. I wonder how long I can last. I hear the cries of the forgotten forests. I see not enough stars. I want to take a reset. I pretend things will change. I feel overheated. I touch trash in my waters. I worry people can't fix what they have done. I cry about the leaking landfills. I am the earth. I understand we can fix this together. I say, 'Come up and take a stand.' I dream we will wake up from this nightmare. I try to stay strong. I hope I can put my trust in you. I am your only earth." So what's so cool about that is that's a fourth grader, but it was a high-interest topic. They were submerged in it in their classrooms, and they had a lot of fun expressing it with some poetry. Even our youngest learners were writing to make a difference, whether it was pictures they were drawing or just sentence starters they were completing. Lots of writing in the building this year, lots of work around production and stamina, lots of pencil-to-paper and writer's notebooks. It's been great to see how much writing has been happening. So I'd be remiss if I didn't take some time to talk about our special area instruction this year. It's been nothing short of amazing. The teachers have had to creatively use materials, space, implement new ideas, really focus on the essentials and maintain the joy of learning for the kids. Sadly, we couldn't do the recorders this year. I'm sure there are a lot of parents that were very upset about that. So in the recorder's place, we have ukuleles. We'd like to thank our PTSA for the tuners they purchased, and thank you to the district for the cart they built for us. The children have had so much fun learning to play, and we've been able to have music in our auditorium. So when the kids go in the auditorium, they have their singing spots, they have their instrument-playing spots, they have their "just listen to instruction" spots. It's been a really cool instructional space to use for that. So in art, this is one of our infamous carts. Our art teacher has been amazing. You can hear her come in a mile away because the wheels squeak, and she has basically used sketchbooks in the materials that are on this cart to engage the kids in rigorous work all year. It's been nothing short of amazing what they've been able to do with just a simple pack of markers and some water and a lot of imagination. So here's just an example of a third-grade study. They were studying Picasso and another artist for portraits. They were looking at the use of color. They were looking at blending and patterning and creation of visual texture, realism to abstraction. And so what began simply in the sketchbook ended in these beautiful portraits that are in the halls, and these are third graders. So just a great example of a creative use of materials. What this year's reminded me of is if you've ever been in a swimming pool with an inflatable beach ball and you push it underwater, and you push and you push and you push, and it won't stay under, and it keeps bouncing back, that's been our children and our staff this year. It's been hard, but it's been awesome to see the creative energy and the hard work and commitment that's gone into everything they've done. This is really a celebration of them tonight. So I wasn't able to share with you, last spring, in the fall of last year, we did our annual Welcome Back Assembly, and we usually create a word on the hill and a drone takes a photo of us. And our word last year was "Inspire". We wanted kids to inspire themselves and inspire others to be their best, do their best to make a difference. And this year, obviously, we couldn't do our back-to-school assembly in our photo, so we brought one word to the kids. And we had a principal's book of the month called "One Word for Kids", and children were challenged to think of their word that would help them be their best. And then our art teacher came in and created magnets for the children that hang on all of their lockers. If Menon Center has lockers, which is unusual, but we love using them to display work. And again, a thank you to our PTSA, who had purchased the markers and the magnets for us last year. I just want to share, a fourth grader wrote to me in Teams. That's been another perk of this year, is the use of technology. And I can't believe what I even receive from children in Teams or on Seesaw. It's great. So after Mr. Albano, our assistant principal, and myself, we went into all 40 pods, and we read the book to the children, and we led the discussion about the words that they chose. And one student wrote to share her word, and her word was "Chance". "Sometimes I need to give myself and other people a chance. I need to give myself a chance to finish my homework or give myself another chance to calm down and breathe. I need to give my mom a chance to breathe sometimes, too. You have to give other people a chance as well. You can't be too up in their lives. Sometimes life can get a little bit hectic, and you need the chance to do something relaxing. Sometimes in school, you need a second chance. My one chance in life is to give others a chance and to make a difference." So this is just a fourth grader embracing this, and her little magnet said "Chance", and it's been a lot of fun to see the magnets. And we were joking during our tour, you can see the magnets, and you know exactly which child it belongs to because they may be words that we've been working on together in the classroom. But it's been a lot of fun. So another thing I was not able to share with you last year is our new sensory path that we have in our back hallway by the gym. We have found that increasingly every year we have more and more children with sensory needs, and we were limited on space prior to the attendance boundary moves. So we got creative, and we found somebody that could create and install this path for us. We also had a generous donation from one of our families. So our OT worked with the creator of this path, tailored it to our specific student needs, added different things in here. So it's a 12-step path, and it works on all kinds of things such as midline crossing, attention balance, focus, endurance, gross motor skills, vestibular movement, which is spinning and twirling. I learned that. Didn't know that before. Tactile input, coordination. And I just want to share with you just a quick video of one of our, this is a current fifth grader, just doing the end of the path. I just wanted to give you a little taste of what it's like for the kids. That was a pre-COVID video. That's why there's no mask. I didn't want to alarm anybody with that. Yeah, lots of fun. So that was actually a three-minute video it ended up being, and we used it to train our staff in each section of the path, to teach them the rationale for it, what it was working, how the kids should do it, and things, traps to watch out for, so staff all know how to engage kids in the use of the path, and our parents do as well. So we see kids on it all the time, taking breaks, taking walks, and visiting the sensory path. So just in closing, looking ahead, we're going to continue to emphasize the social and emotional learning, focus on the essentials, remain responsive with our practices, enhance the work of our PLCs, and most importantly, continue to take care of each other. So thanks for your time tonight. It's been fun to share with you all the great things that have come out of this year. Thank you.
Does anyone have any questions or comments for Heather? Heather, again, I just have to thank you because when you walk into the buildings, you don't realize everything that went into the preparation to prepare the school to open. And I'm not surprised that you know the exact number of desks, tables, and chairs that you have, but it's most impressive when you walk through. And the best part of that was to be able to see some of the kids at the tail end happy to be there.
Yeah, they are very happy.
Thank you for sharing. You did an excellent job.
Oh, thanks.
And Heather, if I could, I would just also add that it's one thing to say that you're open, but to open fully the way we have in the elementary schools and have it be so similar to what it was last year as far as the feel. When I walk in your building all the time, I see kids that are happy. I see a lot of the same practices. But I also can acknowledge all the sacrifices and the additional work that's happening behind the scenes to make that happen. So thank you and your staff for doing an amazing job.
It's a pleasure. It's a great team. I'm really, really lucky. Thank you.
Have a great night.
You, too.
Okay, may I have an approval of the minutes from May 10th, please? Okay, I have Pete and I have Val. Any edits? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. And an approval of the special meeting on May 12th, please? Okay, I have Ted and Irene. Any edits? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Board of Education reports. Monroe County School Boards Association. We continue to meet for, our legislative committee meeting has been extremely active. And Val, if you could report out to us on what we've been doing.
Sure. So about a week and a half ago, we met with representatives for Senator Schumer and Senator Gillibrand. And today, we met with Congressman Morelli. Our biggest topic, of course, was schools reopening, particularly, we need that information for the fall as soon as possible. They were all very receptive to listening to us, and a couple of their comments is, one of them that they recommended that, yes, families, parents, schools, the community members should definitely send letters to their correct representatives and the people, the level of government that should be hearing this information. They were very clear that those have an impact on legislators. So whether it's state legislators, federal, doesn't matter. Those letters are important, so keep sending them. Joe Morelli also, we talked to him today about what we could do to get some help from the federal side regarding working with the CDC with some of those guidelines that we don't feel are completely attainable, and we don't know what it's going to look like in the fall. So we want to make sure that kids can, that we can feel confident that all students can go back to school in the fall. He's going to, Joe is on a subcommittee for the Education and Labor Committee, Federal Committee. He's going to talk to Bobby Scott, who's the chairman of that committee. They're going to talk about, he's going to decide, figure out whether or not there's been any communication between the CDC, the White House, and the U.S. Department of Education and see where that stands as of now. And once he has a discussion, he's going to come back to us, and he's told us he'd be very happy to organize a conversation with New York State Department of Health to bring that information back to them and to advocate on our behalf with them. So we felt really good about that call. Another topic that keeps coming up is about our bus driver shortage. And we've been asking them for changes to the New York State guidelines for bus drivers, not requiring them to have a regular CDL license because our bus drivers don't do the same things that a typical truck driver would do. They're not maintaining the vehicle. We have our own maintenance folks that come out if something breaks down. And so Joe Morelli also mentioned he would talk to Secretary Buttigieg about that, seeing if there's some way around working with that and changing those requirements as well on schools' behalf. And we also mentioned that that's not just a Monroe County issue. That is a nationwide issue. Also, we are definitely meeting with the Regents on June 9th with, again, Wade Norwood and also the new Regent Ruth Turner. If anybody has something they'd like me to add to that conversation, I think I mentioned what we were going to talk about a couple of weeks ago at our last board meeting. But if anybody has something they'd like me to mention, please let me know. I know Mike and I talked about it a little bit, but anybody else, just let us know.
Great, thank you so much.
Dates to remember, we have a few dates coming up. This Wednesday evening is the Monroe County School Board Association Annual Meeting. I believe I spoke with everyone, and you've signed up. But if you change your mind or need to, please let Deb know if you would like to attend. The 28th through the 31st, schools will be closed for Memorial Day recess. And the 7th of June will be our next regularly scheduled meeting. Okay, with that, may I have an acceptance of the record of May 18th, 2021 budget vote and board election, please? Thanks, Robyn and Ted. Any questions? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Financial report, Darren.
Good evening. Have the Treasury report for April. For the general fund, we received almost $2 million in unpaid property taxes that we received from the county. The school lunch fund had a deficit of $58,000. We made whole with the $40,000 per the resolution that you did a few months ago. We are on track to not need as much money as what you authorized. We're probably about $560,000. We're projecting by the end of the year. Sales have ticked up a little bit. Just to give you a contrast, and when looking at the revenue sheet for the general fund, draw your interest to interest expense, or interest revenue, I'm sorry. We're at $51,000 we received at this point of the year. Our cash flow is very similar to last year, and last year it was $587,000. So pretty big contrast. So that's the Treasury report. Do you have any questions?
Thanks, Val and Irene. Any questions? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried.
Next item is the tax surcery. That is the reserve that allows us to have to pay for judgments and claims against the, when somebody challenges those, our assessments, for example. Every year, we need to amend that to what we actually reflect is what's on the books with the claims. So we had about $380,000 coming off from old claims, and then there's $1.2 million worth of new claims on the books that just arrived this year. So we're asking for permission to move into the reserve, the balance of the funds.
We have a motion to approve the tax surcery, please. Thanks, Pete. Thanks, Val. Any questions for Darren? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Thanks, Darren. Human resource report, Sean.
Good evening. First, for your consideration, we have the professional staff report. We have change in status from regular sub to probationary and part-time to probationary. Two psychologist interns. We have an SRP appointment, an SRP resignation, and then our spring coaching update with additional volunteers for you to approve.
May I have a motion to approve, please? Thanks, Ted. Irene, questions? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried.
And second is the support staff report. We have two resignations. We have a school aide and a part-time clerk. We have a resignation, actually resignation for retirement for one of our bus drivers with nine years of service. We have a list of our appointments for summer helpers and one cleaner for Menon High School.
May I have a motion, please? Thanks, Renee and Pete. Questions? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you.
Thanks, Sean. Special education report, Elizabeth.
Yes, we have CAC and CPSC recommendations on the consent agenda.
Thank you. Superintendent's report, Mike.
Good evening. There is not a need for an executive session this evening. On the consent agenda, please see policy approval for the second reading, 7550, dignity for all students, or DASSA. Couple updates. First, I'd like to just thank our community for their support with our school budget. The amount of staff that came out was larger than normal, and the appreciation from the Board of Education and myself is extended to the community in a real big way, so thank you. I'd also like to congratulate our tenure recipients for their acknowledgement this evening for receiving tenure. I also want to just continue. I know things have been tough. It hasn't been a perfect year, by far. But I heard Heather report out at the elementary, at Menon Center Elementary, the things that are happening in the school. And there's a lot of great things that are happening everywhere. And can't thank those that have been positive and trying to push through this in a real positive way enough. During times of struggle, we need optimism, and we need people to help us push through. And that's what's best for kids. So I thought I would start out by capturing one of the small things that happened in our schools today. They happen regularly, but often we don't hear about them. So this morning, I was made aware of, actually, this afternoon, I was made aware of something that I thought, you know, the timing's perfect for a board meeting. We have a math teacher who's retiring this year. Her name is Nancy Ramsey. And Nancy always has music in her room when students enter her math class. And she's always done that. And that music, as they enter this year, provides them that sense of fun, that sense of calm, that sense of engagement. During the course of this year, Nancy recognized a student who, as the student walks into class, has always been singing with her as the music goes on. And that student's name is Gabe Pierce. She also recognized, knowing her student, that Gabe was also a music and theater student. And so she asked him to write a song about calculus for fun. In turn, Gabe wrote the lyrics you're about to hear. And he recruited Ian Ewing and Lance Marriott to sing while Mina Potter drew and edited a video. Every year, Nancy Ramsey and Lena Main host a breakfast before the AP Calc exams to pump the students up. And I want to share with you a video that was played this morning before the AP exam. Anthony, if you can share that? Let's pump it up. I listened to that eight times in my car. And then I just had to really stop myself after that. I was in my driveway listening to this before I got here. It's a great example of mindset. We're going through a lot this year. Levity is important. Putting students in leadership positions is important. The small things that we do are important. So this is a teacher who knew the strengths of one of her students. And she integrated music and art along with math. And that integration was, is something special. And it's what we strive for in many of our classes. Our strategic initiative is around engagement and it's around authentic learning. And she nailed it. And I assure that with you because there's a million things we can complain about, but there's probably 2 million things we can celebrate. And I wish we could find a way to spend our time celebrating on how remarkable our students and staff have been despite all we've gone through. Couple other announcements. I have some dates to share. On May 26th, which is coming up, we have our Rock to Change Summit. And this year's Rock to Change Summit is between Hilton and East. And this is where students from Monroe County Schools, both public and private, come together and engage in facilitated dialogue with their peers around the subject of race. It's actually fascinating. It's mind blowing to watch how well our students can navigate a topic that as adults, sometimes we struggle collectively to talk about. So that is coming up unfortunately this year because of the quantity of students that are involved in this across the counties. This will be done remotely for the first time. Next date, June 1st, our district, in collaboration with PTSA, has brought together Tasha Potter. And Tasha will present her thoughts on the district's ongoing equity initiative and plans to continue forward on her journey. Tasha will also be spending a couple of days with us over the summer to work on our strategic plan as it relates to our equity policy. I would encourage everyone, if you go onto our homepage, one of the ways you can get there is on our homepage, go to Partners, click PTSA, and there's a real quick and easy signup for that evening. I would encourage everyone to join. If you have any questions in advance, you could submit them. You will love, absolutely love Tasha. She's amazing. June 5th, we have our senior recognition parade. I would ask people to arrive on Main Street by 10:30 in the morning. It's going to be fantastic. We have made improvements where our students no longer have to make any left turns. And so they are going to stage at Nazareth College, and it's a straight shot down Main Street. And then they will disperse whichever way they want to go. We will have fire trucks, our school buses, students will have their cars decorated. We've encouraged storefronts to also decorate their storefronts in support of our seniors. I think it's really super important to recognize the closing of our senior classes year this year. I've had questions from parents about, well, what about the sophomores? Or what about the juniors? Or what about, and I get it. It's everyone. But our seniors, when we think about milestones in our life, as a senior who's missed their entire year as one class, this is an opportunity to celebrate them on June 5th as a community. And I think that's really important. So sticking with the spirit of celebrating, let's celebrate our seniors. Let's celebrate and acknowledge their resiliency and wish them the best as they, as they turn the corner and move on to the next chapter in their life. June 11th, we have our senior ball, senior prom that will be held at our respective turf fields. It's kind of going to be like a senior ball under the stars. We will have rapid tests available during the week for any students that want to be tested before the ball, especially given how close it is to graduation. So that brings me to graduation, June 19th. Seniors will be receiving an email this week with specifics. But here's a quick summary of what to expect for graduation. We'll be hosting graduation at each respective school, allowing four guests per senior. The only requirements for guests will be to complete a contact tracing form and a health screening. And both of those will be done electronically, and our principals will be sending that information out this week. There's also only 17 school days left before graduation, which is mind blowing. While we're preparing for many functions for the end of the school year, know that we continue to plan for a full reopening next year. While we have yet to receive specific guidance from Governor Cuomo, he did share today the following. Barring any unforeseen circumstances, all students across the state will be back in classrooms for in-person learning this fall. Goes on to say, speaking Monday at Jones Beach, the governor said New York will be setting a statewide policy for all schools in the future. We have to get, this is in quotes, we have to get back to school. And on our current trajectory, there's no reason why we can't open schools statewide in September. This comes as New York City schools plan to be all in-person this fall with no remote learning options. So we have information that's coming from the governor. And I think that's a really important part to just pause on for a second. Everything that we get from New York State Department of Health is operated under the governor's command, if you will. And so this is great news. It's not unexpected, but it's finally time where the governor is feeling comfortable enough to publicly state that schools will be reopened and policy will follow. So that policy is what's going to dictate three feet, six feet, no feet, mask, all of those other things. So that's forthcoming. While that's happening, we have a subgroup of superintendents that's also meeting. I'm not sure if it's tomorrow or the next day, but we're spending a full day together to talk about advocacy for reopening schools as well as different scenarios that the governor may come out with. So we plan on being very proactive and vocal around making sure we're aligned to guidance, but at the same time, making sure that we're prepared to have our ducks in a row to have our students in a place where every scenario would allow students to come back per the guidance. That's our, that's our quest. And then lastly, I would just say a reminder, students are not in session Friday or Monday for Memorial Day. And that Memorial Day is a day to honor those who died while serving in the U.S. military. So I'd like to send my condolences to families that have lost a loved one. And I'd also like to thank those who are or who have served our country. Thank you.
Thanks, Mike. May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda, please? Three in a row, Pete and Val. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Any old business to share? New business? Which leads us to public comment. The Pittsburgh Board of Education values transparency and the public comments made during its meetings. As such, the Pittsburgh Board of Education actively provides for this agenda item at our regular meetings. Board of Education meetings are not public forums. Rather, they are business meetings held in public where dialogue is not normally conducted with audience members. The purpose of this agenda item is for the board to receive respectful and constructive feedback, opinions, and information. These comments are then taken under advisement by the Board of Education and Superintendent of Schools. Respect and civility are required during these meetings, particularly as we have students routinely attending as part of their coursework. Comments should be in reference to an interest or topic, not an individual. Each speaker will have the floor for no more than three minutes. The board president reserves the right to limit the total amount of speaking time. In an effort to avoid repetitiveness, if speakers are attending with other residents, we ask that the group designate one person to address the board as a group. For speakers who do not follow meeting and decorum protocols, the speaker's privileged to use the floor will no longer be recognized by the Board of Education. Those planning to address the board, which I believe everyone did hopefully receive a card upon entry, these note cards I now have, I will call you by name and you'll come up and announce your name and address and submit your question or comment to the board. First person up is Jane Malwitz. Hi, Jane.
Hi. Good evening. Jane Malwitz, 3873 Amwood Avenue.
Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to address you. It sure has been quite a year. We can all agree that this has been a traumatic and challenging time, and we need to do all we can for all children to ensure they have no mental, physical, or academic repercussions. In fact, Pittsburgh Central School District acknowledged the academic aspect in your policy letter dated April 17th, 2020, where you stated, "Under no circumstances will students be unduly harmed." With just days to the end of the third quarter 2020, the policy erased all students' third quarter grades and replaced with a P. So if your child was doing well, their efforts were stripped and replaced with a P. In addition, no further grades would be earned for the school year. I hesitated to present to you today, but as I have learned in many instances, other families are affected and have not yet discovered the impact or are not comfortable addressing. What about the students that were unduly harmed? For example, students that were taking dual enrollment classes. Do you feel a student or college looks at a P grade the same as an A? What about students whose GPA was impacted by this policy? I was informed this would be a non-issue with colleges as they were adjusting their standards to accommodate. This is not true. I have spoken to many colleges, which state the opposite. I have an email from a school my son is considering for your reference, if you would like. In fact, many schools, due to waiving standardized testing, are placing more importance on students' GPAs than on high school transcript. There have been many articles written on this, and I have brought a couple for your reference, if you care. I believe everyone had good intentions. However, good intentions can have negative consequences, and when discovered, the policy needs to be revisited. I have worked to address this. Each time, I have been dismissed with, "That is the policy." I am sorry, but this is not acceptable. We are all on the same team. Our time and our resources would be better utilized if we worked together for our children rather than adversaries. Our students are competing nationwide with other students whose schools did not have similar policies, and it is putting them at a disadvantage when competing for college admission as well as many scholarships. For my family and the other families that have been negatively impacted by this blanket policy, I have one question. I respectfully ask, what is the harm in allowing students, at their request, to have their third quarter grades reinstated and their grades for their dual enrollment classes be updated to reflect their true grades earned? Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Jane. Next, we have Clayton Baker.
Clayton Baker, 1919, Hawkins Road. I have a couple of things. I'll keep them as close to three minutes as I can. Throughout this very difficult year, we, parents and taxpayers, have been more than once reminded at board meetings of this district's academic standards reflected, as they historically are, in state and national rankings. I and a couple of other parents decided to take a closer look at how Pittsburgh schools have performed in recent years under the current leadership of the district. We searched back as far as we could in the U.S. News and World Report Annual Rankings, which I think everyone will agree are the, sort of the most well-known ones. In 2017, Pittsburgh Mendon was rated the 14th best public high school in New York and the 86th best in the United States. In 2021, Mendon was rated the 22nd best public high school in New York and the 193rd best in the United States. That's a drop of 107 spots. That's a drop of 107 spots. In 2017, Pittsburgh Sutherland was ranked 22nd in New York and 165th nationally. In 2021, Sutherland was ranked 36th in New York and 319th nationally. That's a drop of 154 places. Under its current leadership, this district is in academic decline. The state and national rankings show it. And if you go back and you look year by year, it's a little lower every year. It's not like they just had a bad year in 2021. The test scores of our children the next couple of years are going to show it, is they try to make up for the lost learning of a completely hybrid year, competing against numerous schools that were in school five days for part of, or most of, or even all of the year. There's going to be learning gaps, and everyone in this room knows it. And as it was established at the last meeting, the district's leadership makes no promises. We're leaving it up to Cuomo as to whether we'll be back full-time next year, barring anything, barring anything unforeseen. Well, it seems like the pandemic was unforeseen. Think about that for a moment. The leadership is unwilling to rule out a third consecutive school year without five full days of instruction for all of its students. You're unwilling to rule that out completely, a third straight year. I submit that this current leadership is running this school district into the ground academically. Second thing I wanted to say was, this chart that came up on the 19th from Superintendent Puro, it showed out of a school district with almost 6,000 students and 800 staff, one positive case, one, ladies and gentlemen, at Allen Creek.
Clayton, you're addressing the board. You're not addressing the audience.
Okay. One, Amy, one case out of 6,800 people. Today's date serves as our cutoff point to determine if we're permitted to reopen schools. Despite the good news of cases being on the downward trend, we will remain in our current model throughout the remainder of the school year. One case. If I'm the only person who sees the irony in that.
Okay, Clayton, you've run out of time.
Oh, really? Where's my buzzer?
The buzzer just went off.
Okay, all right. So I'm done.
Thank you.
With the exception of the letter I got today, which stated that I didn't follow the protocols last year.
Nope, you're finished, Clayton. Sorry. You're finished, Clayton.
Along with other people, but I was the only one who received a letter.
Clayton.
So please explain that. Thank you.
I would like to actually address that. The reason you received a letter, Clayton, is blatantly obvious. We have, this is a business meeting conducted in public, and you blatantly have disregarded our protocol and communication protocol. Your behavior has been unacceptable. What you have said is targeted individuals. It's right here in our outline what our protocol is. We have targeted you because you have consistently blatantly disregarded duty your behaviors, your chosen behaviors.
So you targeted me, that's what you said?
No, I targeted you because, I will tell you this, never in my eight years serving and on this board table have I ever received so many emails of people who were concerned for the safety of the board and also concerned about you targeting people, individuals, at this table. So I will share that with you.
Can I also just add, within the body of the letter, I did reach out to you, and I said before the board meeting, I would be happy to meet with you. I'd be happy to discuss this in private with you. I'd be happy to do this so that we can have dialogue. I said you can call me, you can meet with me, but you chose to have it here tonight in public along with someone else videotaping. And I sent it this morning at 7:00 a.m. Thank you.
Next up is Scott Georgia.
Before I begin, I would just like to comment on the principal's comments earlier about why the lockers were at Mendon Center. I went to Mendon Center, and we needed them because it was a junior high school.
Scott, if you could just have your address as well.
I'm sorry, 70 Woodland Road.
Thank you.
Scott Georgia, 70 Woodland Road. I am disappointed with this education my son and daughter have received at Pittsburgh schools. Last October, I wrote a letter to the superintendent and each board member addressing this, but nothing has changed. We knew last October that COVID was a bad flu, but there has been no, there has not been the spread, the sickness, and the deaths that we were warned of. We knew then that COVID-19 was not a threat or a danger to schoolchildren and teachers. No schoolchildren in Pittsburgh, no teachers in Pittsburgh or Monroe County have died from it. For them, it was no different than a flu that we've lived through in the past. I asked to open schools because they're destroying an entire generation, a generation we keep out of school and isolate in homes to protect people at risk who can be identified. Let me tell you about my teenage daughter's out-of-school days at home. She wakes up at 9:00 to 9:30, she does what she wants, and by 11:30, her school day is over. Then she just stays in her room, plays phone games, and watches Netflix. I am certain that other kids are similar. My wife and I have done everything to try to stop this. We have hired tutors. We have encouraged outdoor, outside activities. She is not getting the education, the socialization, and the improvements to health and physical fitness that we expect. How can you and how can the board let this happen? You can tell me that teachers are presenting information or that facts are being memorized, but you cannot tell me that learning is being done, that knowledge is being gained, that events are being discussed, or practices are being questioned. I do not blame teachers. I blame you all for blaming, for standing behind exaggerations and hysteria. My son left school in March of 2020 and never went back. From that point on, he did little work, and you just let him pass. He was given a diploma that was really just a participation certificate. Please do not try to tell me that you have provided an education as to, that's more than what I am saying. You are not. A month ago, I received a letter about Regents exams. The letter stated that if the student didn't want to take a Regents exam, they didn't need to. Or if they took the Regents exam and they didn't like the grade, they could just get it removed. Disgusting. Please, open schools immediately. Do not let another senior class disappear like my son's class. Do not let an extremely poor job that Michael Mendoza has done be a factor in the opening. And please do not require masks. Masks do not stop a virus. Our rate of spread was as bad last year without the masks as it is this year with mask mandates. Even Dr. Fauci says that masks don't work, and so he suggests that we wear two. At some point, maybe it'll be 10. He should stick to science and not being a celebrity who throws the first pitch out at a Major League Baseball game. Also disgusting.
Tom, if you could please wrap up, please?
Yes. I understand that some kids will want to wear masks because we've scared them so badly. We need to educate all on what COVID is and what it is not. We need to make our children stronger and better. For board members, please remember that our Constitution has a system of checks and balances. Thank you for serving in government, and remember those checks and balances. Please speak out and stop what you know is wrong. The education being provided is wrong. For the superintendent, please be a leader and return us to open schools.
Thank you.
Thank you.
If I could, I'm feeling just a need to reiterate, and I really appreciate your comments. I appreciate everyone's, just about everyone's comments this evening. And I know that this won't satisfy anyone, but the reality is that we have a government organization that is operated under New York State Department of Health guidelines. That's our reality. We do not pick and choose which laws to follow. If we did, I would just say, what would happen if the next law we didn't follow was something that you were wishing that we did? This is New York State Department of Health, it's Governor Cuomo, at that level that's dictating what we've done. When we have to, we are charged and have to follow that. This isn't Dr. Mendoza, this is New York State Department of Health, who came out today to say that schools will be open in December, or in September. So this is also the same thing. So I'm wondering, like, when I go to a doctor's office, I have to wear a mask. Actually, I had a procedure done last week, and I had to take a COVID test. And I said, "Well, I'm vaccinated." And they said, "It doesn't matter. You still have to take this COVID test." And that's at a doctor's office. There's, leading up to this, just this past week, businesses, restaurants, festivals, they weren't open fully because they had to adhere to the governor's executive orders. So I get being upset with the superintendent. I get upset with being, or being upset with the Board of Education. We're doing what we're doing because we made a promise to follow the laws of New York State, even if we don't like them. Now, what's the difference between now and September? You're absolutely right. We've learned a lot. We, meaning everyone, has learned a lot going through a pandemic for a long time. We will be advocating and championing a lot more for schools to be reopened, more specifically. And we'll be doing that as a county. We have reached out to our legislators. We have not sat idly. We have submitted creative plans to reopen that were not accepted. We know that the best place for students to be is in school. I also get 100%, and as I look across the county, you're not seeing many secondary schools open. As a matter of fact, in September, you probably saw two elementary schools that were open, us being one of them. At the secondary level, not so much. And there's a reason for that. It's because we're following the New York State Department of Health guidelines, not because we don't want to be here, not because our teachers don't want to be here, our administrators don't want to be here. It's because we have to. This has been a heck of a year. I shared last meeting, I have a senior. Dr. Baker, I know you have seniors, which is why we're spending, not because of you, but the senior concept is why we're spending so much time on making sure we have in-person year-end milestones being met. Our juniors, I feel horrible for. We're turning the corner right now. We're going to open in September. I don't know what the other rules will be with that, but we'll be here. We'll be open in September. I apologize that we're in this pandemic, but we're in it together. I also respect the fact that there's going to be differences in opinions. Trust me, I see it in the exit polls. And the opinions are all over the place. So we have people here right now that are sharing one opinion, and then I'll have many different opinions in my inbox, and then many in my phone calls. But the reality is, yes, people have suffered. People have been unintended consequences to some things. At the end of the day, we have each other, we're going to live with each other, and we're going to turn the corner, and we're all going to be back to how it was before, but better, with lessons that we've learned along the way. I know that there's concerns I heard tonight. I promise you I heard them. I promise you we all heard them. But I will also promise you that there are a million different silver linings that we've seen in our kids, too. And I know you don't probably want to hear this right now, some of you. And I don't, I never thought that we would be talking about what would school be like a year and a half without being in school, but our students have learned lessons that you don't learn in school normally. They've learned resiliency. They've learned perseverance. While we were in school, students struggled. Some students flourished. But the reality is, we all know that our students are best served when they're with us, and that's where we want to be. I want to commend everyone that was here tonight that spoke, everyone. I appreciate your input, and it certainly will be processed. I also wanted to share again that there is a sense of optimism moving forward. And for those of you that have students in school that aren't seniors this year, know that we plan on being open. And for those of you that have seniors in school this year, know that we're going to do everything we can to make it special for them. Thank you.
Thanks, Mike. Anyone else, public comment? Okay, with that, may I have a motion to adjourn, please? Thanks, Pete and Renee. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Thanks so much, everyone.